July fifty. Two thousand twenty five is the number. We can start with roll call, please.
Mayor Matthew Hall.
Present.
Councillor Robert.
Present.
Councillor Luke Dillett.
Here.
Councillor Diana Larson.
Here.
Councillor Rachel.
Here.
Councillor Kathy Ratt.
Here.
I remember the ride. Legend of Leaky's.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. No public presentations on the agenda tonight?
Yes, there is one mayor.
Oh, there is.
Yes, there is. Can you come around quickly?
I'd like to recognize you for your outstanding service to the city over the last few years. And would like to present you this plaque. To sincere appreciation of Matthew Hall and recognition of your dedicated service, guidance, and leadership as your old mayor, your passion and unconditional commitment to making our city a better place, to help to positively shape our community. Thank you for your faithful service. We appreciate you. Say them we're appreciate two thousand twenty five.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to citizen heard on non, non-agenda items. We have one, Chrissy Chandler. State your name and your address for the record, please.
Chrissy Chandler, twelve forty six Lee's Creek Road in Myrtle Creek. Evening. I just wanted to, I know you guys aren't discussing this tonight, but put maybe a couple of potential ideas to fill out and suggestions about the vacant building ordinance that you guys were discussing at the last meeting. Reading through that, there's a lot of loopholes. It would only affect very minimal buildings downtown due to having water connected. It states would be a one of the stipulations that could be considered as a property that has being used. And we have a lot of multi-meters down there. So a lot of those buildings that are sitting empty wouldn't apply to that. Some of the other ones, I think maybe if we focus on some of our current ordinances with like people living in buildings when they don't have businesses out front or operating without business licenses, those, by the way, it's red now, would be able to kind of slide by. So maybe something to build on there. I think the idea behind it is great. And my understanding is basically we're wanting to focus on having a clean presentable buildings downtown to be more inviting, to get people to come in and want to set up shop. I think that maybe going about it a different way would be more in gear with getting people to want to come to the community instead of threatening fines right off the get-go. Not everybody can just open a business in this day and age. And so I thought maybe if the goal is to keep it looking clean, we could try maybe a pilot program where if your building is vacant and it does not have anything in there in lieu of a fine, you could agree to work with other nonprofit. Something about the history of Myrtle Creek, something that Myrtle Creek has to offer its residents and have a window display promoting why it's nice to be here, what and making it look nice. And then they're not getting a fine, it's cleaning it up and hopefully bring more people in. They could work with youth sport organizations. There's many, many civic organizations out there that they could highlight each business. That's maybe something, just some ideas. And then as far as the residential side, we have many homes in town that do not have people currently living in them, but you wouldn't know it. They have water on, they keep their grass mowed. And it's due to various different reasons. We have snowbirds that leave for six months out of the year. I would hate to see them be penalized if they just turn their water off for those months, or even if they do. We have people that are transitioning into care facilities, so their home is still sitting there until they get things settled. We have people that are in trusts or probates, and so they can't immediately sell their homes. And I just feel it would be really horrible for the city to come in and start targeting those people if they're following all ordinances and they're keeping everything clean and nice. Is it really the city's place to go tell them, you don't have somebody sleeping here at night, so we're gonna find you? So just some ideas to think about. And I mean, I'm more than happy to. I have a couple of other ones, but just wanted to put that out there, maybe to get some ideas if you guys can think of some things too to build on, because I think the idea behind it is good, but maybe a little more brainstorming on it. That's it.
Thank you, Chrissy.
Thank you.
I see that after looking at the I think we're scheduled for another work. World meeting or organization, or protection next meeting, the first for August, so that's definitely coming up. I think there's a few things that I refer to that, I'm like the talk about food, sorry. And there were good things worth to reveal that.
I'd like to, especially I'd like to fill this.
Yeah.
The things that you mentioned, because you said it really fast.
I was on a time frame.
So.
I can type something up.
Yeah, great.
Sure, I'd like a copy also.
Okay.
Just provide one for the county.
Thank you.
Mails of the city sending a letter.
Emails cheap. Consent agenda items. We have two parts tonight. Part one, approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting for July one, two thousand twenty five. Part two is acknowledged receipt of payroll and claims report for June two thousand twenty five.
I make a motion that we accept consent agenda part one, part two.
So.
Discussion prior to vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Good. Moving along, department reports. First step is planning slash community development report.
Yeah, let's go ahead and submit the community development report into the record and answer any questions you may have.
We got it.
It's a pretty light one.
How many chapters are there in the code?
There's eighteen of, we're on chapter ten right now, and I believe there's either two or three that are intentionally vacant, so. We're looking at about five left.
They've done a great job.
Yeah, they have. What's going on with? Sure, I said, no, I got one subdivision, well, Neil.
Neil? So they were having to redo the entire storm system in there this summer. And so my understanding does means is they're working on that. So where they're at, I'm not exactly sure, but they have replaced that entire storm system. Uh, it's nine for apparently put it in raw. Well, geez, yeah. So. Everything else is, for the most part, done. They just didn't prepare that storm.
Anything further for planning for community development? Next up, we have finance officer report.
So Leslie's on vacation, and so I'll go ahead and submit her finance report into the record. Answer any questions you may have.
We're too long of our fiscal year.
This is actually the last one of the last. Yeah, that's right.
Any questions, comments regarding finance officer report? Next up, we have police department report, chief. Chief, conveyor, councilman, our report is written and answer any questions you have.
Where did Officer Mel Don, uh, on the you held not, where, where did he?
He, he worked for the sheriff's office here in the.
So is that a downward? Recension, or?
I don't look at it like that.
Sorry. And did he start there?
Yes, sir, in the sheriff's office, yes.
Okay.
Officially, it's a lateral move. Yeah, great. Yeah, he did. So he's, he's done with his field training. He'll actually start on his own this week when he comes back. So we kind of put him on a road trip, so he'll see an avenue ship that we really haven't had for a long time, but it's he'll be here with another officer for several weeks on that road trip. So, yeah, he, he did a really good job. He was actually the primary officer on the incident we had last Monday. Did a really good job on that. He actually wrote search warrants, did all paperwork on that, so. He, you know, definitely showed he was capable of doing the job.
Does he live here in Rockford?
Uh, he lives in Southern. You have anything further for police department report? Very good. Thank you, chief.
Four of them.
Okay.
That's a lot of your question. Going back to the finances real quick, sorry, I missed this. If I'm looking at this correctly. We missed revenue by nine hundred thousand dollars, but we were under ten million dollars in expenses. Were you looking like, like we did that well? On the very bottom line, am I reading that right? Like, should I?
Yeah, we, we had a good year of like like we budgeted twenty-two million in expenses, but we only spent ten or eleven. Is that right? I'd have to go through it, but yes, that's basically what our report is showing.
Seems crazy.
Uh, you have to remember that we have the reserve accounts that are in there as well that we have carryover that's budgeted, so we budget a carryover. So the budget will carry over, but it's, it looks like an expense in there. So it's gonna look like it's big, but it's actually just the net ending balance that's, that's in there. So let me show you, we show you an example. If you haven't put that in here yet. So underneath streets. You have it's not brooding down, so it's not allocated in here. Says forty-seven thousand, period amount is zero. So she, there's nothing in there, so it's budgeted, but we didn't spend anything out of it because it's
Right.
It's gonna be the carryover.
Yes, forty-seven thousand, that's something like nine point nine million.
Yeah. Okay.
So, yeah.
Maybe like they're all out of.
Do you want to come in? I can show you what, because i- if you look at the detailed budget, I can actually show you the line item where that stuff's actually running from.
Can you say further? Except we have fire department report, chief.
Babe, bear, council, submit my report and ask any questions you have. And our fire with the truck.
Yes.
Pickup truck, he had a bunch of garbage in the back, and he threw a cigarette butt in the back.
Vehicle, I want vehicle. Vehicle player.
Yeah, there's no vehicle bar.
They've got them listed on here.
Oh, yeah, it's this month.
So, so next month, you want to ask a question?
And we have started a fire grant this summer, all the fire departments have done it too. So there, we got, I got two months staff. Uh, ninety-three Friday. And you see they were down there doing the bridge down. I figured that was good. Thing has always been growing, looking like I'm gonna take care of it this year.
Was that the pressure washing?
Yeah, the pressure washing down.
The most amazing thing about that, probably for the police patrol. You see, they finished up one night and they left that pressure washer out there.
Yes.
And I, and I went through the next morning and it was still there.
We hadn't tied, we had chained up to the.
That's good.
I kept believing left it there. I guess he left it there tied up, and then we had a call at Lumer Hill. And we didn't get back for a while, so then he maybe he just forgot that.
Maybe. I was glad to see it there two days in a row, though.
That's not anything.
Are you gonna coat the bridge with anything now that it's clean?
No, just, we just did it like that. It's, it's the county's bridge. So it's up to them or something. So we just figured to get that all.
Yeah.
It cleaned up nice?
Yeah, it cleaned up pretty good. There's some chunks and stuff out of it, but that's, we didn't do that, so.
Yeah, that's, it'd be a good time if you wanted to do something.
Yeah, you can put some laundry and stuff, so. I thought it was a good project to, to, to start a little stuff, so. So, you know, anything down the road that we need something around the counter, closer stuff, we can buy to do something. Because right now, they, they continue to clean up around the hall and stuff, and they had all trucks up and just clean all up. My biggest project this year is I'm going to get that ladder and I'm back. It's gonna take about fifteen guys to pack it up. But I'm gonna get it down there, all down there, clear it up. It's a forty-foot ladder, three sections, all wood. So you tell us. They bought it years ago and they had it on top of forty-seven. And they used it for the main reason they got it for the down, down the park. On the backside.
Bumper.
But they only used it once or twice.
Yeah, we don't have like saturated.
Yeah, it's a big that thing's huge. Been sitting, I'm, I'm surprised it fell off the wall. So I like to get it as you want to date all that, the city coming helping and stuff. Get all cops and bring that away.
Make a barbecue party or something. Everybody comes for food.
Yeah, we gotta get some brackets made so I can hang it up on.
We have five illegal burns here. Are any of them second offenders, Karen?
No, actually. They're not really second offenders. We just had one the other day that got a difficult accident in his backyard, but he had tall grass in the back. But also the FBI has farmed on that with it, if they're within a quarter acre. Their forest land. They got, they, they can come and check too. So. But mostly just people that just started, one guy just on Janet Lane, watch out fires. Because it rained a couple of days. He said, how about fires you even end? I said, no, don't end that. You get these people that do that. I'm glad that we can get them out, put her stuff, and a lot of just little flyers and not much to them. We just go ahead and most of them, I just tell them to put it out, and they put it out. If they argue with it and then that's when I'll call cops and make them come right. They're friendly, I let them go, but they want to be nasty about it and all. No, they're all been very good. They just, they don't want to be, you know. Even though it's a hundred degrees weather out there.
Anything else for fire department report? Thank you, chief. Except public works report.
I'd like to go ahead and submit the public works report into the record and answer any questions you may have. Where's South Bank, bro? Is that the? South Bank rather is the one that goes, I believe, behind the driver, right? No, South Bank would be the high race.
Oh.
Says repaired signs on Johnson Street and buying maple. Do you know how much longer I'll be, I'll need to wait for my street sign?
I'll talk to Zach on that. I might have raised that on that.
She don't want to repair it, just want the sign.
They, they ordered to, they ordered wrong street sign.
Yeah.
Put up, I think it's two cedars instead of a cedar, the maple. So wrong tree.
Anything further for public works? In the outside.
The repaired storm ladder, everyone, I know that, is that right one over off of, so, everyone's more old. I remember seeing all that piping, that was, oh, is that, that's what happened without, so the city was fixing that?
Well, we contracted it out, but yes, it was fixed, so.
Where did the pipe go?
Uh, Zach took what was left over back down to the sort of plan where we are second batch.
That's the pipe that we voted deep in that special meeting, six hundred feet for there and six hundred feet for the Lenore man.
Assuming how many have faded lots?
Chief, you know me.
Uh, yeah, it's my next one for, let me think. Four. So the numbers drop.
So all the stuff that's happening at the Millsite Park cleanup, is that due to the summer festival or there's a lot of cleanup going on, which is great to see. I'm loving it. But I had heard that well, it's because of the summer fest.
They're gonna be starting to set up summer festival next week, so there's probably a little activity down there getting ready for all that.
It, it looks pretty good. I have to say.
Will we get then the water to build up here a little bit more? They fall a little more water on it for this week?
Yeah.
It was pretty dry. I just, I just, because way, those mines go off, they, yes, and I'm fired for the bit.
All right, anything else, public works, before we move along? So now we have a public hearing, continuation, Paul.
Did you want to move that to before the because that's the public, okay, and then the executive session, right?
Executives, this is, this can stay in place though.
Yeah.
Okay. Public hearing, and this is continuation from July one meeting, two thousand twenty-five. We will now reconvene the public hearing to review the city of Myrtle Creek's request for legislative amendments to timeline of the Myrtle Creek Municipal Code. The time is five fifty-three.
So at our last meeting, we had one question on drug paraphernalia. And so I've asked chief just to give a quick, quick overview of what that means to this policy. So, chief, I'll turn this section over to you. I'll get down to it here.
Yeah, so it was my understanding that maybe there were some certain questions regarding stores that may sell bongs or cabs or something like that. It would be a violation of the city ordinance, if they would not. So basically, my best understanding, we have been trained, taught, and understand that it only comes from paraphernalia, paraphernalia specifically designed for drug use or has drugs used through it. So like the pipes in the bongs that they sell at some lonely stores, they, they classify those as like a tobacco water pipe or tobacco pipe or tobacco water bong. Therefore, the design and the use is intended for tobacco, which is illegal. So there wouldn't be any violation of any ordinance by someone else.
My, my question was, I also want to brought this up, my question of it all was if marijuana is legal to use and then they use it through one of these pipes, how does that become, make that drug paraphernalia go legal?
It would go, it would largely be drug paraphernalia because marijuana is legal in order, right? And so back in the day before marijuana.
Pipe, I can see, right?
Yeah, so it would largely be considered drug paraphernalia because
Okay.
Drug, marijuana is not legal under state law.
Okay, that, that was a big question.
Yeah, but if it, if it had that, that, or heroin residue or fentanyl or something like that, then that's drug.
But they would be selling them that'd be used.
What's that?
That would be used once it passed that residue end.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's the folks who, after they purchase them, if they use them for that, you're able to stuff some.
I can imagine using one of those for tobacco and.
Okay, well, I, you know, tobacco, I guess.
A lot of things have like gray areas and ways around things, and I think that's one of those those things. It's, I mean, even before marijuana was legalized and legal, there were stores here in town that sold those.
Yeah.
Been in there for years and.
So when I was in my twenties, cocaine was a street drug. And then it meant to crack. And so now is it fentanyl? And if it is, what percentage is that?
So, so those are two totally different categories. So like cocaine is a stimulant, right? And then we never I've never seen crack cocaine, because I think that was a chemical breakdown of cocaine that made some different, different chemical thing, I mean, a much more potent addictive, like crack cocaine. Um, I don't think it really hit here, but what we did see was the stimulant was methamphetamine, because cocaine was much more expensive. So the folks around here, methamphetamine was a drug of choice. It was the one that was available for the stimulant. Cocaine has came back, cocaine, I, maybe prices have dropped because we do see cocaine now, which we didn't use to for, you know, local people. Uh, but like the fentanyl, basically first it became the pills, right? And then when they really restricted those, then the heroin came. And we started seeing the heroin because people were addicted, and then one of their opiates, well, fentanyl's taken over. It's, it's a much more potent than heroin, so we don't normally see heroin anymore. It's mainly fentanyl. Fentanyl's an opiate, so the effect from that is, you know, very relaxed going off on the knob versus the cocaine or methamphetamine where it's lots of energy, they're, they're up for long periods of time, things like that. They're, they are mixing fentanyl and all those drugs. So people are unexpectedly you know, they'll buy methamphetamine, and they, they're not a fentanyl user, but they're ODing off of fentanyl because the dealers, manufacturers are cutting it with fentanyl.
See, now, so now I would explain all the pictures of they look like. They say that everybody should have Narcan. Where do you get Narcan?
So I think like the HIV Alliance, they, they hand it out for free and stuff like that. We carry it. So what we do is if we go to an overdose, because we signed up for a state funded grant to be able to get an Narcan, we don't have to pay for it. So if we go to an overdose, we leave an Narcan behind, and I've used Narcan at that location. But like for just individual citizens, you can either buy it at the pharmacy, or you can go to the HIV Alliance, I believe in Roseburg, and they, they hand it out.
Public health has it. For free.
Yeah, we carry bar, bar. So we usually carry at least, at least three doses, typically four doses in our, our cars. And then we place it anytime we need to. All right. Are there any further questions about the paraphernalia question? Okay, well, we will continue with the public hearing. Are there any parties and witnesses who wish to speak in favor of the legislative amendment? Are there any parties who wish to speak in opposition of the legislative amendment? Does the council have any questions for the staff? Hearing done, I will now close the public portion of the hearing, and the city council will begin discussion on the matter. The time is now five fifty-nine.
Do we need to make a motion before we discuss? I'd like to make a motion on the ordinance, mandating the Myrtle Creek Municipal Code Title Nine, Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare, and repealing and replacing ordinances number six forty-five, six ninety-eight, seven thirty-five, seven ninety-seven, eight twenty-four, eight forty-four, and eight forty-eight.
So.
Discussion prior to vote.
So basically, this is just encompassing all these different ordinances that are dated. Basically dated. I'm bringing them up.
Yeah, and the, the changes that we discussed last meeting and this meeting, and so it's replacing those older, older ordinances.
Okay.
Any further discussions? Right, we'll take this to vote. First up is Kathy Ragg.
Aye. I.
Uh Diana Larson?
Yes.
Rickell?
Yes.
Robert Cheney?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Very good. Do I need to move that? As a first read for the record? I don't think so, okay. Uh next up is subordinate eight seven six. It's a first read and ordinance granting MCI. A franchise for the purpose of operating as a carrier of long distance telecommunications, traffic. And replacement and maintenance of fiber optic cables within the city right of way.
So this is um. The MCI or Verizon franchise agreement, um it was a thirty year franchise agreement that expires this month. And so it's just a. Similar to my housekeeping to to get that put back in place, so we can get those franchise fees for their buried line that goes through the city of Myrtle Creek. Here's the map, the pier of where the line comes through. And then goes down, comes through down main up for. His division and goes out. Uh north of Myrtle. And so they're uh. Giving us the franchise piece for basically having their buried line coming underneath our city streets. Uh and then uh. They base it on annual basis. Uh we have, or they have ten thousand three hundred twenty one feet of line. And in twenty twenty five fiscal year, last year, they paid us fourteen thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and forty five cents. So this is basically to continue that on. There's not a lot of changes. That are proposed. Uh one is just the rate change, basically updating into what the new rate's gonna be. And the other one is to having a thirty year, it's broken up into ten year segments. So that if we want to make a change after ten years, we can possibly make that change instead of having to wait thirty years. Uh so those are basically the only changes and removing the emergency approval that they did last time, and they approved that this. Everything else, the language. Is unchanged.
It's a dollar sixty one per foot, is that what I'm saying?
Yes, and then it goes up based on the CPI. West, I believe it is. Each year.
I make the motion to approve ordinance eight seven six and ordinance granting MCI a franchise for the purpose of operating as a carrier. Of long distance telecommunications, traffic and replacement and maintenance of fiber optic cables within the city right away. Now second.
Discussion prior to vote.
When I saw the word MCI, I thought, where is that? Or I'm seeing that name, I wanted to get that.
They still run it, run their MCI though. I don't know if those are one of that end around.
Alright, we will take this item to vote. Kathy Ragg.
I agree.
Diana Larson?
Yes.
Rickell?
Yes.
Robert Cheney?
Yes.
Luke Dylan? Thank you. Now, we're gonna have a change in the quarter, hear the same thing, so everyone doesn't have to wait around. Are we gonna move our executive session after endpoint two? So what we will do at this time is go into regular agenda items. And first up is. The Elks Scholarship Donation Request. Duan has been a fellow support for us tonight.
Oh. So. Um this is a sponsorship for the Elks Golf Tournament that they um host each year. Um last year, they submitted the same request and we so gave them a three hundred dollar donation towards their scholarships. Um doesn't look like they did anything in twenty two and twenty three, and in twenty one. Um we gave a hundred dollars, so kind of the history. It was just a. Donation request received in the mail and asked presented counts.
And where would this one come out of?
Council, the council fund table.
And why do we have less than that account?
It's a brand new year, so it's fully loaded.
May I ask if the right?
What is, what is our fully loaded?
Don't recall what that is. It's more than. Than three, five hundred dollars. I wanna say it's like fifteen hundred, but. Don't quote me on that. I I can't recall exactly what it is.
Well, make a question. We've donated three hundred dollars to the Elks Scholarship Program.
On second. Discussion prior to vote. Yeah, you know. The only thing I have is, I know. Two of us came on late in the year and we got towards the end of the year and we already ran out of money and then we're scrambling to make transfers to try to. Fit stuff in and I don't know if I agree too much with all the transfers that we make. I would almost say they're asking for. Levels of sponsorship, either a hundred or three hundred. I don't know why. We wanna go with the maximum right now and start draining our fund the first week of the year.
And along the same lines, I was sort of asked like, what are the other things that we typically use that fund for? It's typically for donations.
If like in February, we were. Pretty much out of money and what does have the council or LLC, is that, is that money?
That comes out of training membership.
So we could do maybe a hundred and fifty or so.
If I may.
Sure.
Not to be unpopular, I don't, I don't understand why. If if the Elks wants a donation from city council, why they don't send a representative here? Uh because we have a lot of donation requests and typically they come here and explain and and. That's that's my thing, that's my thinking on the whole thing. Um the Elks is a nonprofit organization, I believe. And. They have different fundraisers all the time. They take this money, they donate it in the Elks' name for these scholarships. I'm not sure I agree with it. All that flash. I I thought about that too, and I think it. You're absolutely right. You're not being the bad guy. It comes down to the same thing. It's not really. Like I say, if people come in in person, ask for money, and we got to the point where we're saying yes to everybody, and then our more organizations are gonna wanna come in and say, well. You gave this, give it to me, give me, give me, and. I just don't wanna run out of money, and so I'm almost. You know, that's one of my issues too.
I'm gonna have to agree because uh to start out this year, we're. In the whole seven hundred thousand, so uh at some point, we're gonna have to try to. Tighten things up as for your presentation, Lonnie, and uh. I think a good place to start, um the Elks plays a huge. Part in this community. Um I I think that they deserve money, but. But I I think we have to be realistic because. To this year is gonna be tough and it looks like going, we won't gonna be lush. So. I would say. A hundred, maybe a hundred fifty.
I would say.
Mayor, call the question, because the motion was made strictly for discussion.
Right. Doesn't mean that anybody agrees. It just puts it out there to.
So we had a motion, Dave, offering a three hundred dollar donation. Do we want to vote on that motion? We had a second on that also. Do we want to vote on that? Or do we want to?
Rescind and re.
Rescind and. Rethink that. That motion.
I'd like to get a a motion.
You made a second.
I did.
We send you a second.
No, we could have let it die or lack of a second too.
Or we could vote on.
Yeah. That's easiest.
You wanna do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Kathy Ragg, you were up first.
I'm gonna say. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say a hundred twenty five. So I did say a hundred fifty, so. Three hundred is, and now we're on camera. Okay. So uh. I'm gonna say no.
Diana Larson?
No.
Rickell?
No.
Robert Cheney?
Well, I made the motion.
You did.
So I have to vote yes.
And Luke Dylan?
I said no.
So that does not pass. We would wanna bring up another motion. At a lesser amount and go that way. And or.
I say no unless they wanna show up in person and explain to the.
Yeah, I really think that that would be a courtesy, you know.
I agree.
A minimum. To come at least and present.
In their defense, I didn't send them the agenda pack yet because we haven't requested their presence in the past, so that's just in their defense.
We have had them show up here and ask in person before. It's been years.
What about if we? Agree on that amount. Give it to them this year and then say for the. Years going forward, we could.
If it were me, I think they should come up here and and make a request in person.
I mean, we've we've listened to some previous presentations.
Yeah.
The last six months and kind of look forward to somebody coming in person and explaining their situation.
I agree. Great. So we will move on to. Whisker Warriors.
Good thing you're here.
Come on up, identify yourselves, please individually and state your address for the record.
Lily Jasmine Stock at four fifteen Northwood, Hurst Street.
I'm Lee Catlett at one seven six D Lele.
Nice. So good evening. Whisker Warriors is on fire. And we would like to share our numerous victories and current update. First, we now have a dedicated number for citizens to call to get help. As of today, we have a hundred and forty five Facebook members and a hardcore dedicated group of volunteers. We have spayed ninety females and sixty five males. Nineteen were in heat and twenty were already pregnant. Fun facts about cat reproduction. Cats can reproduce as early as five months. Cats can become pregnant. While nursing. And finally, one cat and her offspring. Theoretically, could produce over two million cats in eight years, exponential growth. So we have altered a hundred and fifty two cats and kittens, many at our own expense. Fundraising. A total of almost nine thousand dollars, of which three thousand was provided by your generous support. With your six thousand, you have allotted added, that equals fifteen thousand dollars. This number includes cash and in-kind donations, including cat food, litter, traps, et cetera. Additional fundraising efforts are in full swing. We have dirt donation jars around town, held a yard sale. And have multiple citizens who have agreed to make monthly donations, which equates to hundreds of dollars per month. We will have a booth at the Myrtle Creek Festival, a Wheel of Fortune, featuring a Wheel of Fortune, offering prizes and free spay and neuters. A spaghetti feed is scheduled for September twentieth at the Community Center, which has been fully sponsored. By one of our founding members, so the entire proceeds will be profit. The spaghetti feed feed will feature grass-fed beef from our own Paul Campbell Ranch out of Dixonville. Some of the finest, healthiest beef around. Fresh organic sourdough loaves will be made by our own Hurst Street Homestead out of Myrtle Creek. Kerrygold butter from Ireland and organic garlic. A former chef. At at a Hard Rock Cafe has volunteered to cook the meal with his own crew. Another cat lover. Oh yes, and organic semolina pasta from Italy. Tickets will be available ahead of time, so get yours soon, as we would be honored to have your presence. And you will be mentioned and recognized in our presentation that evening. Five oh one C three update. As you well know, creating a nonprofit is both costly and circuitous, and our five oh one C three is still under advisement. We are continuing our research and are now leaning towards a trap, neuter and release five oh one C three and not a rescue. So for the present time, we continue to spend every penny penny we raise on the spay and neuters. Our efforts. Are definitely snowballing in no small part due to your most generous support. Our challenges are ongoing as the magnitude of the problem is gigantic. We are currently overwhelmed with calls for help. We will continue to work with the citizens, volunteers and you, the city council and city staff. Members to provide a beautiful and harmonious environment for both humans and felines alike. We would like Myrtle Creek to be an illustration of how a serious municipal problem. Can be addressed and rectified by a dedicated group of both citizens and government. Thank you very much for your time, concern and financial support. Lee Catlett, one of our lead trappers. And a highly valued and competent member of our team will now provide a deeper picture of both colonies and our trapping adventures. Lee?
Thank you, Jasmine. So as you look at the screen here, I've been putting together a map. Uh where all of the colonies are. I'm able to update it as we start working on them. So currently. When you're looking at the colored dots there, red. Means that we have not started it. We've had people reach out to us to tell us that. There's a colony there. Yellow is we are in progress. And green. Is finished. As you can see, we've got several throughout city limits, and then we're also marking the ones. Out of city limits to where, when we're using our own funds. Uh like in tri-cities and and things like that. Trying to make sure I keep a very close. Count over. Over where all the. Areas are, so that way. When Saving Grace calls us, because oftentimes lately, when they call us, it's at five o'clock the night before their appointment. And they're like, hey. Can you help us? We need these these slots filled. I'll pull up the map. And I'll look at where we're either already started at. Or where some of the biggest colonies are, and I'll start dropping traps and moving in a circle around town, trying to get as many cats as I can. We've been building some great relationships with both Saving Grace as well as New Beginnings SPCA. Um they are located here in town. And so what we've been doing is a lot of the more friendlier kittens and felines that we get. If New Beginnings has space. We transfer them to them, whereas when they get the ferals, they call us and have us take the feral side. And then with Saving Grace. We've been doing a lot of the same. We've actually transferred. Three litters of kittens already to Saving Grace that we have taken in. We've made sure that they were friendly and healthy. And then taken to Saving Grace, and so because we're building that relationship with both of these other organizations. We're able to work as a team to really get. These colonies under control. It's still a work in progress. We still have a lot of work ahead of us. But. You know, we're constantly working on it.
So you're you're dropping off the kids and the nade down, huh?
Yeah. One litter that we took in, there was six of them in the litter, and there's currently only one of them left it.
Well, just gonna ask that, like, to our people actually, like. Actively, they're like pretty active. The city was pretty active.
Yes.
And don't gas.
They are. Um right now, they have a special fundraiser going on where Thistle gave them a grant to help empty the shelter. It doesn't work for the kittens. Kittens are still full price, but all of the other cats and also some of the dogs are at a reduced price because of this grant that Thistle has given them. Um so I've gone in several times over the last two weeks just to check on the kittens that we've taken into them. And out of the. I wanna say fifteen kittens that we've taken then, there are only two left. We do have another litter of kittens that we're in the process of working on getting them healthy enough to go to Saving Grace. They came from one of the local mills and they were covered in ringworm. So Saving Grace spayed them and neutered them and was like, okay, we cannot take them until they are completely a hundred percent healthy. So thankfully, we have a friend that. Offered to. Foster them temporarily to get them healthy enough.
Silverbacks.
Huh?
Silverback.
Yep. About every three days, we're doing that, plus the oral antibiotics.
And they really like those.
Going back to when we were talking about the money, it was, um my understanding and. From all the meetings we've had, we haven't given you nine thousand dollars.
She was adding the three thousand from last year and then the proposed six thousand.
I don't think it's no proposal, it was just budgeted up to.
Okay.
Okay.
We haven't made any decisions.
Alright.
Denied. I'm missing meetings.
No, there hasn't been a request that to go out there, I don't get it.
Okay, my mistake. I understand. Yeah. That's fine.
On your map, can you, can you um point or a color where it would show like? On your map, can you can you um point or a color where it would show like the biggest colony?
So right now, in city limits, it is going to be over off of Christian Street. So the three dots, the where the three yellows and the two reds are, right in that area off of North Myrtle. So the
Right down.
Yes, those right there, because those on Christian Street. I've been working with several different people there that the cats are constantly rotating. Um, at one, in one appointment, we took in twelve cats on one day from there that we had spayed and neutered. And there's just, because that was right at the beginning of kitten season, there was still several females that was already having babies and still very pregnant that we weren't able to get back to.
But you're trapping ones that you've already done.
We, so we do get some of those because of the ear tip on them. We're able to recognize them and we release them to reset the trap to get a different one.
So what would your estimate be um as to the number of cats up there?
Right now, I don't know. I have not been able to get a solid number because of how they're moving between several different houses.
Did you say at least twelve?
I would say more than that, because we've already done that many. We we've probably, I want to say where's my, where's my thing, my list? We've done well over twenty cats from that area already. And I know there's still.
There's still. I spoke with one of the neighbors there. She estimated, I asked her that question, she estimated between thirty-five and forty, so.
Is it all ferals or are they strays or?
They are, they are all ferals.
Ferals.
They they completely flip out if you get near them or even if they get in the trap. And then once we go to release them, they are gone.
There's an elderly man on one corner that was feeding them and not, you know, spaying or neutering or doing anything but feeding them. And then it just, you know, mushroomed.
They have bigger healthier litters.
Yeah, right. So he's been feeding them, and he doesn't seem to understand about the, you know, I think that's an elderly person with, um, you know, maybe. I'm not sure, but I think there might be some cognitive issues there. I don't want to say that. I'm just not sure, but.
Yeah.
That's such an issue.
There's just time. Thirty-five to forty of them, just in that one area.
And that is.
We've done twelve, so that, you know, there's probably more.
When you, if you were to zoom in on the map on that area, it is all within four houses, because on Christian Street, it's at the end of the road where it's a cul-de-sac. And so they move between that cul-de-sac down along North Myrtle. And so they're making that giant loop right in there.
Can you show me?
Right there, yeah.
Okay, so just right in there.
Yeah. And we've been getting a lot of calls here recently about rays and the apartment complex right there and the two assisted living facilities. And that's going to be the second largest colony that we have right now. We have that one too. We've been working at um and trying to get them under control there to help uh with being the height of kitten season. I had a meeting with Saving Grace and they said the reason why appointments have slowed down is because they're primarily going for kittens. And so all of the TNR programs have taken a back burner and were only used as fillers.
Thank you for your presentation tonight and thank you for your your efforts. Since you have nothing, or I guess this might be a good time to make an official request since you're here.
You don't have.
Um, well, I do have another question for you for on city property. If we are trapping anywhere on city property, would you guys want us to have a sign release from somebody? Relieving the city of anything should any of us get hurt? Like, do we, is that, is that something that?
Would it be either, will that be considered like a city volunteer?
Or you're talking about city property or private property within the city?
I'm talking just city property, any like. Right.
It'd be good to have something on file for like volunteer form that you're doing that.
I guess so. So I would like to formally request from Whisker Warriors as donation of six thousand dollars for us to continue our efforts of trying to get the cats under control.
Most certainly. How many do you think that would cover, working with Saving Grace and?
So if we were to do it with just with the pricing that Saving Grace gives us. That would cover a hundred cats.
Six thousand normally.
Because it's sixty dollars a cat through Saving Grace.
And that is a very good deal if you go to any vets or anything. I mean, that is like cut rate. Seems like a lot of money, but for one cat, but I mean, it's hundreds of dollars. You could go to a regular vet and it's two, three, four hundred dollars. If you can get in.
Yeah, and with the three thousand that you guys gave us for last year, we were able to do sixty-six cats. Saving Grace will actually do a lot more wheeling and dealing once with with expressing to them that you guys are helping us, trying and them trying to help us help everybody. They will actually start cutting that off.
So you did sixty-six for three thousand, but you can only do a hundred for six.
Just because that's where they they added in.
So they're not going to give a break this year?
It depends case by case. It depends on what grants they have available.
Potentially.
Right.
Potentially, they they could do a lot of the work.
Yes.
When was the last time you joined?
Three thousand.
Like last, it was last
March.
March, yeah. I was, I would be willing to do like do three today and then and then imagine with this with the update, like, I mean, so.
Perhaps we have the option of, so that six thousand will be for the full either. Maybe go half that, three thousand for six months and then and then come back.
See what they are.
My point of discussion is when we did this in the budget, some of us mainly wasn't comfortable six thousand dollars, and I was told if we put it six thousand budget, that doesn't mean we have to spend it. That's just what's budgeted. Here it is. Second meeting in July and we're already being asked to give the whole six thousand and then what about the rest of the year?
Yeah, I think that's why I think I'd better give it half, because then we can assess how we're doing as a city.
I can see that point, but I still don't think that's half, because I mean, you're talking about giving away the six, the full six thousand dollars, but when we discussed a budget meeting, that was just an in number. We're just using that number. Well, we probably didn't give it there. Now we're here. So that's my my feeling on it. I I want to help. We already helped with three thousand, but I just don't think we can.
They're doing a lot of work, raising money from the community also, and it's definitely a community problem that they're willing to put the boots on the ground to deal with for the city, which is a value we can't put a dollar sign on what they're doing.
Well, I think I agree with um councilwoman that, um, because I think when you first start and attack the problem, it's when you have most of your efforts going into. And um you're probably, we we don't know at some point when you're going to level out, when the trend is going to level. So it sounds to me like you put a good dent in and you work with the community, but uh I'm thinking it might be three thousand per quarter possibly, but we don't know that. And so I agree with Luke that um we could give so much money and then continue to get updates.
Yeah.
And the reason I I'm also saying this is because over at Creekside, uh, I I know you guys went in there, cleaned that out. I'm pretty sure you did. And then all of a sudden, now we've got a litter of kittens, you know. So um I think we may not get to the six thousand, but you know, we need to find out what is, because it is a hell, it's a huge hell. So um I think you should get something.
Not to dictator, try to tell you how you should spend your money. It's important doing this, this spanneuter, the the physical doing that. I think it's very important to to continue with the nonprofit stuff too. And I know that takes money and time. It's not fun dealing with the IRS by any means. Perhaps maybe earmark some of that money, because it will cost some money to to continue forward with that.
And people are wanting to give money, but it's a.
That will let you to get more donations potentially.
And that is something that we are still working on. Um, there was some the ag department had started for shelters and rescues. They went through the state and started handing out hefty fines. So we were trying to make sure that we are going down the correct path for what we do. We don't want to set us up as a shelter or a rescue when we're only a TNR group.
Right.
So we're just trying to make sure we have all of our our Ts crossed and our Os dotted before we fully delve into that. The money from you won't be going towards that. The money from you is only going to spay and neuters. So.
And I and I think I'm with the councilor Dylan as well. By going maybe three thousand and seeing how you can leverage that, so you're able to leverage the last three thousand to do sixty-six. People know with the this three thousand, you may be able to leverage it to do seventy-five, who knows?
Right.
You know, let's see how that rewards maybe, maybe Saving Grace will be able to do a little bit more and come in a little bit under. Maybe they'll give a little bit and you know, or maybe there's another entity out there that might be willing to.
So far with everyone that we've talked to, all of the other vets that we have went to, even the snip clinic won't come close. We tell them what Saving Grace is charging the, charging us and they laugh. They're like, yeah, good luck. If you can get it at that price, you stay with them. You don't. Which is why we keep working on that relationship and that rapport with Saving Grace. I had a meeting with them just a few weeks ago, just to to make sure that we can do everything we can to form a great partnership. So that way, when they have the ability to cut the price down some to where we can get more done, they're able to. I found out there that can do a full spay for a female in under four minutes. That's the moment of knocking her out and slicing her and then stitching her.
Well, it's really small sniff or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All of it's done in four minutes or less.
It it makes me wonder why. They're they're almost, uh, with these prices, they're almost pushing towards euthanizing rather rather than uh cat catching released. Whereas, you know, then what about some big advocates like Peta and people like that? Maybe they get involved a little bit and maybe can push some of the back this way a little bit from that that side of things. Might give price and border. I mean, yeah, they gotta make money too, but.
Well.
It would be nice if the local vets would, you know, give a little, like one day or something to have reduced rates. They used to do spay day USA and when COVID hit, they quit any of those vouchers. And just, you know, that one day, it it twenty percent off, it was a huge break for for people.
Yeah.
But they won't even do that. So that's the real sad thing. We're such a new organization and we've just started our fundraising efforts. I mean, we're only a few months old officially. And it came down to, we are going to have to stop doing all spay and neuters and put all of our money into five oh one C three as opposed to continuing our spaying and neutering. So that's kind of where we had a vote. We decided, hey, we're going to go down to zero, not doing any spay and neuters. We're going to have to, you know, cobble all our money together for the other end. We're still doing the research. So that's one of the reasons why we were delayed is because we're deciding between trap, TNR and a rescue, which are two totally different things. And we're not a rescue group. And um it was going to come down to, we were getting not very many cats spayed and neutered. It was going to go down to zero. So we decided that, you know, because we oftentimes have a budget meeting and we have like a hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventeen cents or something like. We read it down because you know, everything's expensive. So that's.
Yeah, I I do agree with Commissioner Hell to some uh degree there about, you know, we don't have to uh expend the whole six thousand dollars if, you know, that's totally up to this body. And I have another thought, maybe this might be more towards where Rick is thinking. I, we have six thousand dollars that we budgeted for this for the year. And I said that we have to give it, right, but we have six hundred for the year. Maybe we want to be breaking that out into fifteen hundred dollars. Do it that way, say two thousand and eighty.
I mean, that.
And spread out.
My whole thing on this is if if you guys remember the budget committee meeting, we discussed that I asked, why are we putting six thousand up there if we don't intend to give it out? And here we are, giving it out.
Why didn't we, did we, we did that with the intention not to give it out?
No, no, not the full six thousand. We just you're told that up to six thousand. Six thousand, my question was, you know, we just donated three thousand, now we're donating to six thousand. So we're not donating six thousand. We're just for a number. We're pulling a number out, put it up on the budget board, but we don't, we won't be giving that money out. We don't have to. And like I say, here we are the first of July, we're already asking for the full, to get rid of those.
Yeah, we misunderstood how the process worked.
We were all for giving the three thousand before I'm behind. I'm still behind helping, but I mean, it's like, okay, so now it's, you look at nine thousand dollars and the more money gets thrown at it, what I'm looking at is the more people are saying, I'm not going to spay neuter my cats because I'll let them do it.
Sure.
And the money's gonna run out.
So we have had, we have had people reach out and ask us to spay their cats.
Right.
And our response is, sure, we'll take them in, we'll span for you, but it's sixty dollars and you have to pay us. You have to pay for it. So there are, there have been a few times where they do, yes.
They do.
But that wouldn't be out of the money that we're giving away, because we're strictly, what we agreed on, strictly feral cats.
So who would pay for them to get spayed or neutered? These are cats that are really not owned by anybody. We're in a low-income area where people can't even afford sixty dollars for a cat that's not there. So that's where we are.
Like, how soon does it take a stray cat that's been dumped before they're considered feral? They won't come around people and stuff like that.
Generally, feral kind of, they they're born feral. They're born.
You can tell if they're like an owned pet that's been dumped versus.
I just, I can't fathom the amount of numbers you're saying are feral cats in Myrtle Creek. I've lived here for over fifty years and I know there's probably been stray cat issues, but all of a sudden now.
So, but if, if you think about the number of cats a female cat can have each each litter, three to four times a year. And then each female out of that litter, you're you're looking at a huge amount. And so with each litter that it that starts with a stray, somebody has their house cat, they get sick of listening to them meowing, so they kick them out. She gets knocked up, she has the babies outside. Those babies were born outside, so they're going to already have that feral mentality and that fear of people. So then they get knocked up. They have babies. Now we're we're too deep into the feral mentality and they're even more afraid of people. And it just continues with each litter until you get the ones that are just downright vicious.
Like a wild animal.
Yeah.
They're scared is what they are. They're scared and they're they're fighting for their life.
Yeah.
Because they don't know what you're trying to do.
No, they, when when they get into the trap, they go absolutely berserk. And I've I've actually had several that have given themselves bloody noses because they have freaked out so bad trying to figure out how to get out, that you have to drop a towel or a blanket over the trap and step back and let them calm down before picking it up to move them.
I think it's really brave of cats.
So I say what they're doing is the hard
Oh, I understand.
And they're doing it because there's a need and they're trying to fix. Right. And as a reminder, the money that we're getting from you is totally spent on spay and neuters at a very reduced price. And it's a really good bang for the buck, because it's a lot of time and energy goes into trapping and that's all free. So we're doing every, all the other stuff for free. Our gas, our, you know, it's not costing you anything except for the money. And I understand what what the gentleman there is saying about, you know, I thought that we had six thousand in the budget. I didn't realize it was a placeholder, so that's my mistake. But we are, you know, putting a lot of time and effort into it and we really appreciate your support.
And not any of that is going for like wages.
No, no.
It's all going. It's all going to this spay and neuter. There's so the time and effort that they're putting in if you dividing that into the three thousand for, you know, just, you know.
And it's it's something where you can so easily get hurt. Cats are so vicious.
And then you end up on an IV drip.
Yeah.
And the fleas, I mean, and it's the exponential problem. Maybe it wasn't so bad a year or two ago, but it's. Inched itself up to the point now where it is a pretty large problem. So that's where we are. It might not have seemed as bad previously, but it is, you know, it's exponential growth and that's what happens.
Do you want them to bring like receipts?
We do do receipts. We bring a receipt. Every penny that you've given us has been verified by a receipt. We bring, we pay out of our own money in our own pocket first and then we get reimbursed.
We make sure so saving grace will knows that when we pay them, we need that receipt. They actually will email all of the medical records that they normally don't release out for the feral cats. They email us for every single cat so that when we've got everything to show.
I just think you're doing a marvelous job. I know, I don't think other cities are as privileged as we are to have you guys. Honestly, I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but I just don't feel that.
Thank you.
So should we make a motion then?
So we have a couple of different options. I've heard, I've heard the whole six thousand. I've heard quarterly donations of fifteen hundred. I've heard six month donation for three thousand.
Of order. Do them the three thousand for six months as, you know, that they come back and let us know. How it went, how much damage they've done and how it looks going forward. A second then. You need a second.
We do need a second. Do we have any discussion here to voting on this?
Uh, still, like, I I I feel like before they were fifteen hundred.
Yes, it's the same deal in the kind of fifteen hundred every three minutes or it's just that they would have to control their. They're not spending.
Your one piece saying give fifteen hundred and then we see the progress and if we feel there's.
It's not that we're not seeing progress. I think it's just we earmarked a possibility of six thousand for the year. Like, I like the idea and I don't like, not, I'm not giving away all the right away. What we're doing is we're opening up another fifteen hundred hundred dollar, like um. Pocket of money for them to kind of get reimbursed for. It's kind of we got some extra money for them to be able to do that. I think that's how we're trying to, we hold on to the money and you guys as soon as we see reimbursed. It's sort of allowing them to have another fifteen hundred dollars to be able to do that.
Yeah, it's not, it's not like that. They're taking that money to leverage it. It it is not like, so it doesn't matter the amount that they have. And they're not using it to leverage it to to gain more. It's a reimbursement.
Fifteen hundred a quarter or three thousand a half. So we have a motion that three thousand for the six month.
Okay, I'll. I'll resend that motion.
You can't do that.
I can't?
No, got to guess go first.
Oh my gosh. Uh, well, then I propose.
No, you gotta resend your second.
Resent the second then. And I resend the three thousand and re-motion for fifteen hundred per quarter.
Yeah, and then I second that. Okay.
Discussion part or what on this? All right, so we will take that to vote, starting with Kathy Redd.
I agree.
Diana Larson.
Yes.
Rick Hell.
Yes.
Robert Chaney.
Yes.
Luke Dillon.
Yes.
Here we go.
Thank you.
So we're on, we're on the way.
You made my.
About two weeks.
That sounds so good.
Yes.
About two weeks.
Should be by the first of the month.
And we should be going again.
What day is it?
September twentieth. Um, and I'm, we're still working on, we're gonna try to see if we can either do printed tickets to where we can sell personally. Or if we can set something up online to where you can preorder online and get a print.
We might need to hustle and get it ready for the festival because that would be a perfect place to sell tickets. We might just have to get paper tickets and then do some.
Yeah.
You know, tech stuff.
Yes.
You know.
Is the free say in here for just a cat or is it cat or dog that you said you would be giving away?
Wildcats. Cats, yeah, for right now, until I hit the lottery. Then it'll be everything. Thank you. Any other questions for us?
Good luck with the fundraiser.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now is the time we're going to go into executive session. So the city council will now meet in executive session for the purpose of consideration of information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. This executive session is held pursuant to O R S one nine two point six six zero. Two F representatives in the news media and designated staff should be allowed to attend the executive session, believe upon approval of the council. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media here are about to study are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session. Except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. Time is now six forty-seven.
Our viewers know that we will be pausing the recording and they can stick around. Or I just did.
Yes, we we will be pausing the recording and we will resume when we get back into open session. And in executive session to discuss matters under O R S one nine two six six seven chief F. By the city council in executive sessions, I am now reconvening the regular meeting of the city council. Time is six fifty-six.
We still have people.
Welcome back. So next on our regular agenda is the mayor replacement.
What?
Anybody, anybody wanna be mayor? We left it aside tonight. What is the, what is your amendment typically?
I'm into meetings.
In Santa Claus.
You don't have to be Santa Claus anymore. The fire department has that covered.
Right, we had to.
You know, the one time that I did it, they were dueling Santas there, so.
That'd probably be the fun part of the.
There's, there's a lot of fun stuff, but you know, going to. Which typically it's, I've never had to vote. Since two thousand nineteen as being a time a time breaker.
I think it'd be a poor experience.
You know, when when I came.
We have from the uh, from the date of of the mayor's resignation letter. We have sixty days to fill that position.
Because.
So many mayors and stuff.
And I'm the mayor of Tim uh during that period. So if, you know, you want to, and I don't blame you, I want to talk to your wife. If you're interested in that, we could certainly.
I know you participate in certain things like, I know you, and I'm not sure if it's because you just have some of that little bit of freedom because of. You know, you're self-employed, something like that, but you, I know you were sort of like those small city meeting.
Yeah, and and then the L O C meetings, which, I mean.
Which I made it to.
And mayor's conference and they usually run the, there's one mayor's conference a year typically that runs. You know, separate from the L O C meetings.
And I'm asking the questions so that I can go like.
The time commitment isn't a whole lot different than what what you're looking at as a counselor. Same meetings, it's a lot of the same events.
Boy, I remember um, Julie and I used to talk about, you should remember telling him, remember that we always liked you as where I was like, oh.
You're like the face of the city, aren't you? In any kind of a uh. Like there's a disaster or.
Sure.
For the news media.
We have.
As an administrator.
Yes, thank you. I would notice, it's always good to be, be out there and be seen.
Right, if you're the mayor.
Well, I mean, I'm I'm open to that. Well, we don't have to do it right. The second thing we have to do is. We could, we could do it as somebody else's, I'd want to sweep in tape. No, I I I don't think anybody else here did it for taking my position, Luke.
The one thing with you, you came on when on my last election cycle, right?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, he's on the same, uh, oh, see, I'm, yeah, I mean, you would, your term would be up anyway, but be correct, yeah. So we can wait till next uh, next meeting then, if that's.
Sounds good.
All right, and then after that, if 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 it is a councilor position or if we do appoint a councilor. And then we'll have to fill that vacancy.
Right.
And that is what we could have planned. To finish out his term as council.
Right, but that's, his his doesn't come vacant until he becomes mayor.
Correct.
Again, I guess, the other question I may not even get to that, but how long can he be pro temp mayor?
Up to uh, up to sixty days because we have to have a mayor in place within sixty day period.
After his resignation.
After his resignation.
And when you're pro temp, you still keep your.
Yes.
Which may or may not be obvious for it.
Right.
Probably will be.
So do we need to make a motion or anything or?
This is our information if we're not going to make it a. Remember right here, we got my ass, but I don't know if I should. Okay, no, we'll just do this and keep him on. All right. We have city administrator report. So that one thing tonight, pass this out, I'm gonna read from this. Um, dear mayor, all honorable members of the city council, after careful consideration, I am foremost submitting my resignation. As city administrator from the city of Myrtle Creek, effective sixty days from the date of this letter, which was July fourth. I spoke to um, the mayor and um, Bob yesterday. Uh, with my last working day being September twelve, twenty twenty-five. This decision has not come easily, as it has been a true privilege to serve the city of Myrtle Creek and work alongside such dedicated, such a dedicated team of elected officials. Staff and community partners. Over the past six years, I've been honored to lead and support initiatives aimed at improving city operations. Strengthening community development, enhancing public services and advancing long-term strategic goals. Together, we have made significant strides in improving quality of life for our residents and laying a strong foundation for the future. It's been a great honor to serve this community and I'll always remain proud of the work that was accomplished together. Please not hesitate to reach out if there's anything further I can do to support the city during this transition. Well, that means that it's, we we appreciate the time that you spent with us here.
I thought we gave you a raise and you were gonna say that we retired.
Things, things change. I, that's completely understandable. Um, Rashid, all the time to do it for one six years.
What's the typical process of replacement?
So that's whatever you want.
Yeah, it can go several different ways. I've been involved with three of them. Well, you can just put together a community board to uh, solicit applications and put together a community board to review those applications. Uh, you know, with significant people from the community along with council members. Or you can do it strictly by the council and have them be the only ones that have any input on it. And uh, or you can hire an interim to uh, the the league Oregon cities has an interim list that you can hire from. Uh, that will come in and be the interim city administrator until you find the a perfect candidate for your position that you're looking for. Uh, there's so, it's how we want to do it as a council.
I think. I think getting L O C involved is definitely.
I I think that would get around for advertising proposition. They they help with advertising, they'll help you with the selection process. League Oregon City Cities. But I also think it's paramount that you have a a. Group within the city being counselors and people from throughout the city that have different uh. You know, some significant people that can have input, they may not be the ones who do the final hiring, but they can have some input. Final hiring actually comes down to the counter. But I think that input from the community is is valuable too.
So who gets the process started? Do you reach out to?
We can reach out to the league Oregon cities and uh, and say, hey, uh. We are, we are in the process of looking for a new city administrator uh, has a resignation as of January, uh, July fourteenth. And uh, we'd like to get that process started. We should put a ad out there. They have, and we have an ad, I think. We can, we can create. Create one and put, put that ad out uh, on the league Oregon cities. They have a job service board there where you can post any of this on the, on there. There's all. There's like seven pages on there already with the. Uh, different positions throughout Washington, people from Washington post on there or.
Well, we have the council got to make a decision on what our guidelines are, what we're gonna ask, we need to reach out to them and ask them for their input.
Right, right, yeah, we, we have, and while we're doing that, I think we should take a look at and do some specific. Revisions of the uh, of the job description, because I think there's some stuff that's pretty vague in there.
Which job description are you referring to? Which job description?
Uh, he had the job description and a contract. And a contract.
There's, there's two job descriptions. I'm asking which one are we gonna go with or is that a separate one we talked about?
Yeah, yeah, and I thought. Yeah, we need to decide. Those things will need to decide if we go forward, but I think first thing is giving, giving it out there that we are in the process.
So that's the first step. We're gonna have to come up with all the meat and potatoes right now.
No.
Okay.
You don't have to say that, are you off to something? Was that, are you off in doing something you're excited about?
I have a couple of opportunities I'm exploring. And that was the one and only item tonight.
I mean.
Do we have anything else for Lonnie? Or move along. My suggestion would be if we're all gonna be in this process that maybe we all should have a copy of the. On track and job trips so we all are on the same page.
Agreed.
Very good. Well, we thank you, thank you for your, for your six years that you spent there. Greatly appreciated. You'll be.
Is the contract public record?
Yes.
Yeah, and then, yeah.
Next up, we have mayor and councilor reports. I'm going to start tonight. I have a letter to read. Uh, dear members of the city council, city staff and citizens in Myrtle Creek. After careful thought and consideration, I am submitting my resignation as mayor of Myrtle Creek, effective August fourth, two thousand twenty-five. This decision comes as a result of my family's upcoming relocation out of state. While this move presents new opportunities and is the right choice for us at this time, it also means stepping away from a role in a community that I dearly love. Serving as your mayor has been a profound honor. The strength, kindness and civic spirit of Myrtle Creek is truly special. I'd like to thank the dedicated elected officials, city staff, volunteers and engaged citizens that I have worked with. That are all committed to the well-being of our community. Together, we have accomplished much. I'm proud of the work that has been done to support local families and businesses and improve infrastructure that strengthens the fabric. The fabric of our hometown. I have full confidence that the city will continue to move forward with the strong leadership and shared purpose. To the people of Myrtle Creek, thank you for the trust that you have placed in me. I will always carry this community in my heart and. I will always carry this community in my heart and remain grateful for the privilege to have served. I'm committing, I'm committed to assisting in a smooth transition and will remain available in the coming weeks to help however I can. Back and forth, Mayor of Myrtle Creek.
How is the previous community going?
Twenty two thousand.
Lake Visions.
Lake and River. Yeah. So I guess just to get clarification and I might so ask if you maybe form a three-person group. If we want to try and get this out there before you actually have an opportunity to look at the full job description, that maybe three people look at what is gonna be posted on the L O C. That way there's some council representation on what's gonna be put out on L O C.
I'd be willing to sit on there. As you're all right with that.
I'm.
You're gonna become mayor. I would do that.
Why is he getting, why are you reading? Why not? We go five, it goes into a forum, and so this is just to get this, they request us to get it posted before you have an available in the job description. So this is just that. So it would eliminate the public meeting requirements. Or else you get a whole special meeting and review it, but that's.
I'd be on the same. I'm on the same page if possible.
Yeah, I would do a special meeting.
Yeah, we don't wanna. I don't think it does this city any good. Just take three and then.
Yeah.
Eight and eight two and.
Could you do a work session to review?
That's what you do.
Okay. So you just have to set a date. Then later.
We do that over a year. Right, half, because once half or summer festival.
Oh, yeah, right.
The next one, actually, our next meeting here is the bed, right? What could we do at the, uh, that Tuesday after summer festival?
The twenty ninth.
I'm good for any day.
So I think that, that's something else you need to bring up once. Once Matt's gone and that's an open position, I'm thinking, right, that now the council pounder five, so changes our form. The three.
It, it will, it will for that.
For that net time here.
Right.
But we're gonna go for.
Form a board of form three.
Right.
Timing, why they make like, like if I said August seventh, that too late. Like, you know, that kind of time, kind of.
Did you say after or?
That's fine. That works great.
Good for me.
So what, what time care?
So what for you? And a boat trip on road, but I don't think I was really planning on going, so yeah.
Oh.
Wednesday, Wednesday's our.
I'm, I'm good with any day, you type it, I guess.
Third day, the thirty first should be fine. Thursday, you like your first, you wanna try for that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So five thirty, thirty first.
Okay, I'm special. Yeah.
And then it is to clarify, we'll be reviewing job description and contract and it's kind of like. I determine what we're gonna end up. Getting to that.
Post out to L O C. Yes, yeah.
Yeah, might, might be, uh, good if we could get a copy of those ahead of that.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, what are you looking at in Dropbox?
The two job descriptions and the contract. So going into. Counsel comments. Kathy Wright, you're up first tonight.
Uh, I just wanted to say how. It was, it's been nice looking or, uh, seeing all the cleanup and all the. All the lines being red and all that exhibiting around the parks. And it's been great seeing that.
Thank you. I'm gonna miss you guys too.
Joanna, are you going somewhere?
No.
Rick Heldon.
Yeah, why did the pool get shut down today?
Uh, the chemical imbalance. So they're trying to get that straight back out. So Zach and Brian Madison are working on that.
So who's, who's been brought the chemicals into the. You know, the pool to work to get them out of balance.
The A P too much. If it's, we three that are working on trying to get that issue resolved, so. Somebody has to have a certificate. Zach has the certificate. Has that been given? Zach has been there, Brian's been doing the, uh, chemical. So you're saying Zach couldn't oversee that? Zach's been, he's been there with Brian, Brian being the primary person and Madison in the primary contributor of chemical, chemical.
So it kind of sounded uncertified. Wasn't enough.
Correct. Anything else?
So I'm letting him.
Robert Cheney.
Well, I mean, I guess, uh, I have to say that you and Lonnie had impeccable timing. Gonna miss both of you. I think they, they, they have been here. And, and Luke, I think you wanna step up there. I think you'd be lined up and. We'll be moving on to our next big adventure of the city and hopefully, uh. And hopefully see all you smile on the face of the summer festival these weeks.
You're good.
Thank you. Um, I had one thing. What about the legal cities thing? Or the, the thing for, when is that supposed?
Conference.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
Yeah. Be opening up.
I can see one registrationism.
It opens in July. I don't know what day in July, but it opened in July.
I know that this.
Registration, it looks like is open.
Yeah.
So the sooner the better.
Who was wanting to attend?
I will not be attending this year.
Really?
What we, can you pronounce?
It was October second through the fourth.
Oh.
I'm planning on going. Right now, you know.
Put me down to. I'll let you know.
You may have to sign up for the mayor meeting prior to that.
Yeah.
Rick, were you interested in that?
I know it's open weekend, I know, but I don't.
I'll go with Sean's and goes.
They did that last year.
Going out on open weekends. And that's suicidal.
Yeah, that's the best, best time of the year to go fishing by my lake, I'll guarantee. Youthful weather's nice and there's nobody out in the lake.
Right, Luke Dillon, you are up.
Good. I mean, uh, as opposed to where it lasted. Just, yes.
Miss you guys too. It's been a good council. All right. Time is seven nineteen and our meeting's adjourned.